The Eastline Board of. And welcome, everybody, to the Eastline Board of Education meeting. On for August sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, and I'll call the meeting. To order. And since I am not in the room, I've asked Candace Carlsen, as we did in July, to act as the chair for the meeting. I will stay on Zoom all during the during the meeting and be a voting participant. But Candace, I would be more than glad to have you lead us in the Budge Allegiance.
Thank you all, and welcome. Tonight Jamie is going to be acting as secretary, since I'll be acting as chair. And we're going to start with a public comment with our in-person folks tonight. We have a few people here, welcome again. I'd like to just go over the rules for public comment. They each person has three minutes to speak, and I would appreciate that we stick to the three minutes and give everyone an opportunity to speak. So with that being said, go ahead.
Could you just check to make sure your mic is on over there, too? Unless you're, we had them off earlier, so there you go. Thanks.
With that said, anybody that would like to address the board's bed, please stand up and come to the podium. Thank you.
Thanks, Grant.
If you could just give your name and your address, please. I'm sorry.
No, we're leaving them on, Beth. Yeah, thanks.
My name is Elizabeth Montello. First, I would like to say that. Been to and watched many meetings, and I'm very glad to see the people are. So this day, I think it's really an important part of American life to be involved in our government. These are our children, and this is this town's taxpayers support this school. I would also like to acknowledge that everyone that I've heard speak here is actually against the evils of racism. We just have diverse ideas about the past eliminated, but that's an excellent starting point for discussion. So I just wanted to go over past history. So on March thirtieth of this year, the Diversity Equity Inclusion Path Talk Committee, March thirtieth, put out their strategic plan for the diversity equity inclusion in Eastline public schools. This was a Tuesday before Easter holiday. Following Monday, there was another draft put out that. It was about four hours allowed for public comment, and plan was unanimously passed. Four hours for a public comment for a plan that changes every curriculum in this school. So my objection to that plan can be summed up in the fact that I don't think that it's. This plan, which was unanimously approved by this board, says that racism is a complex system of beliefs and behaviors grounded in a presumed superiority of the white race. These beliefs and behaviors are conscious and unconscious, personal and institutional, and result in the oppression of people of color and benefit the dominant group whites. A simpler definition is racial prejudice plus power equals racism. I object strongly to that definition. I object strongly to the fact that that definition is the basis of this plan that was just presented and passed. I think this is as wrong as it is possible to think. Because I'm against racism in people. This plan can be found on Eastline Schools website, the district head, the diversity center. So it brings up an essential question for this board. Does this school system promote the judgment of people by their character or by their skin color or other central traits? And does past discrimination, horrible, terrible thing, justify present discrimination?
Mrs. Mandela, I profusely apologize that I that I have to interject. I truly am, but you are at over three minutes, and I am very sorry. If there's something that you have written that you'd like to camp in, I'll be more than happy to put it in.
Or send it to me, Beth, and I'll be happy to send it to the board. Absolutely. Yep.
Thank you so much. Would anyone else like to stand to?
I'm not my glasses, it's kind of difficult, but I have an asthema. For being on through one twenty-three cent of the area out of Niantic, Connecticut, a good place for political science. I taught New Orleans for thirteen years, I was a board member in Waterford many years ago, I was a union, involved in the union as president, just to know my background. I I'm going to state now, probably the people I want to hear that might not be here, but I believe all Black Lives Matter, all lives matter, and all police lives matter. Little children who are innocently being killed in many cities certainly deserve some outrage, as does the ambush of Ella French, the twenty-nine-year-old policewoman. I believe everyone should be judged on their character, not the color of their skin, something the CRT does not agree with. And I have to say, because Black Lives Matter is behind all this, does not speak for all black people anymore than I speak for particular groups. I am not sure, I think I said this before, what the end goal of groups like the Equity Institute brought out are, I don't know what they're trying to do. I guess one would be to make money, because a lot of these groups are springing up all over and making billions and thousands of dollars. I I think fifteen thousand to present divisive rhetoric to Eastline staff is just unbelievable and a waste of money. You're not the only system doing it. You know how much more money you're going to spend on this fiasco? I gave you part of the copy, I gave you the class and part of the survey to you guys. I'll be honest with you, third and fourth graders, I know an adult that was in the room, and one of the questions kids have was, what religion am I? They didn't even know what religion they are. Do you really think they understand these terms? And this was generated by the Equity Institute of Rhode Island. Doesn't say much for them, as a former teacher of elementary and high school. This is a bunch of lies, really. This is, plus, the other point being, it's none of their business about these kids. It's none of anybody's business what they identify as. This does not form with the school system. Um, okay, the other thing, it was brought to my attention that in one third grade class in this system, some of this stuff is being taught to the kids. Kids were asked to look up definitions regarding, I don't know, diversity, maybe Black Lives Matter, racism, all these different terms that go along with critical race theory. And also, I was told I don't know the names of books, there were some inappropriate books presented to them. Parents, let me tell you, once parents find this stuff out, they're not going to be happy. They're not going to be happy. All right, um, the last meeting, the last, two things, the last meeting, there were two people who talked about, oh, it's a history, everybody's against history. Nobody's against the history, we don't have a problem with history. It's a racism, it's a racism. I'm going to quote, someone else said this.
Mrs. Gunther, I profusely apologize, I do, I'm so sorry that I have to interject. If you have something written or you'd like to add, please.
One time in the stairs, I'll walk you back to my chair. You people need to be more visible and open to talking to the people, not just emails. People that are ready for reelection, we hope to have some forums where you can answer questions.
Thank you.
And again, I have a good place for political science.
Very good.
Feel free to send me any information if you'd like to.
Sending in, I don't think anybody reads it or hears it.
Well, we do, we definitely read it. It's just, it helps continue to get your respect. Thanks.
If there's anybody else that would like to stand to speak, please take, take your turn. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Tom Bella, I live in Three Rockville Drive. Until recently, I was not sure where I stood on the issue of mask mandates in schools. Not a very political person, unfortunately, this has become a very contentious political issue. To get past the politics, I looked at the published CDC data for myself. As a professor of applied mathematics at the University of Rhode Island, analyzing data is a very big part of my job. Recent reports have highlighted that several key metrics, such as hospitalizations for children, have increased by large percentages in recent weeks. The data confirmed this, but it is also extremely deceitful. Every introductory statistics student learns the fallacy of reporting large percent changes in very small data. Roughly speaking, doubling a very small number is still pretty small. Most recent lately CDC data estimate only five hundred and twenty children aged zero to seventeen, most of the high-risk factors are currently hospitalized due to COVID nationwide. With about seventy-four million children in the U.S., this certainly qualifies as a very small number. My time is much too short for more examples, but the evidence-based conclusions that the risks of COVID to children are statistically irrelevant, even though they vary. Many proponents of universal masking try to frame this decision as whether or not we protect our children. It's basically those against masking, and it's reckless. I believe this does both sides of the service. I absolutely want to make sure my son is safe in our schools, y'all do. Masking, in concert with documented risks as well, which I encourage you to research. It's not merely a question of whether or not we protect our children, but from what we protect. The decision to mandate masks after September thirtieth can and should be made at the local level. If the state changes from a mandate to a recommendation after September thirtieth, we should interpret this as an explicit statement that they do not intend all districts simply to mandate masks, but rather to consider the local circumstances. Based on your strong leadership thus far in the pandemic, I have full confidence in this board and this administration to successfully manage a mask optional school system, at least to start. Changes could, of course, be made if and when the evidence shifts, and when it does, if it does, I would strongly support this change at that time. In conclusion, I understand it's much easier for me to argue for a course of action than it is for you to take. It is you who will bear the responsibility for the consequences of that. I don't envy you this responsibility. Whenever you decide, you'll likely upset a large portion of the team. Whatever your final decision, I hope this board makes a compelling case for that decision, so it is clear that all options were duly considered. It would be very dismayed if such an important decision, one about which so many people are passionate, was made by simply citing a potentially politically biased recommendation unsupported by evidence.
Thank you so much, sir. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. Is there anyone else that would like to stand to speak before I move on to Zoom? In, does it still going once? How do you want to do that? Do we just call Jackie to have her go down the list?
Yeah, Jackie, I think we had two individuals that had let you know that they want to speak via Zoom, correct?
Yes, they're both on.
Okay.
Mr. and Mrs. Yeah, yep.
All right, Mr. Barelli, Mr. Barelli, each have three minutes.
Thank you, good, we got a good.
Okay, hi, I'm speaking for Andrea Barelli, who lives at fifteen Indianola Road in Niantic. Before I read her comments, she asked me to remind you that several weeks ago, her husband Matthew emailed each of you asking, what is your understanding of why Black Lives Matter is not all lives matter? To which none of you replied. He also asked Andrea the same question, and she chose to use his poem from one of his latest books as her response. I'd like to start her three minutes now with a poem entitled "A Path Ever Unfolding." Built Martin a statue thirty feet tall, now we don't follow his teachings at all. Justice through love, replaced with a fist in a glove. Character defined, good within, limited now to the color of skin. When tragedy came, the baton was caught by a man, police stopped. Malcolm laughed at Martin's way, saying peace would no longer hold sway. Violence, guns, and closed fists was the way to accomplish his list. Slayed those who did not play his game by using the X in his name. His life was ended with a shot by the group he begot. Mohammed Elijah did Jesus replace, Farrakhan put Christianity and Jews in their place. Bobby Seale and Newton Two started up their very own crew. A ten-point program did they write, the white people to fight. What they demanded was seen as red, was to be threw up handouts, not getting out of bed. We should separate, live alone in a country of our own. Beautiful in every way, only we can keep it that way. Police treat us with brutality, guns assure our vitality. No longer ask, we demand, no justice, no peace in the land. A long time ago, these words were writ, new players now act their own skit. To get where they want to go, politics and power, move it fro. Invented phrases with their meaning, separation is their leaning. Black people all the same, whites are not to play the game. Fires and looting ruin the community they're saluting. Money spent on damage wrought, better used on goals sought. Dialogue due process, no longer the way. Bullying and pressure now win the day. Simple answers put in place, in the long run, a disgrace. Cannot work nor be done, any attempt to disagree is met with anger and villainy. Coming to a fork, go our separate ways, equal like in olden days. We said no a long time ago, now it seems it is where we're about to go. Our nation's future not scribed by a few, it must include me and you. Disagree all day and night, do it peacefully without a fight. Make it safe to have a view that's not in sync with me or you. E Pluribus Unum, with God as our guide, will bring more than just black pride. Justice for all is Martin's prayer, still the best way to get us there. Thank you.
You going to speak as well, Matt?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. You don't know it, but Jeff went to a very interesting thing at the state last week with the opening of school for student attendance, and we brought in somebody from Harvard that was talking about the need for communication and how to do it well. And I've been a board watcher for forty years, and I've seen every different kind of board, from a state-appointed board where we had the head of Ublind as the chair, and we had vice presidents and all these high-level people, to mom-and-pop boards. And I'd like to comment on 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 you guys and sort of give you unsolicited advice, which is the worst advice, but one of the problems you'll hear is that you don't seem to solicit advice, and I'm hoping you will. And what I'm saying to you is that, one, you have to take, you have to, let me stop my three minutes now. You have to take off your mom-and-pop robes, and you need to put on your.
Mr. Barelli, just so you're aware, you're one minute in, so you've already begun.
That was a press.
Continue, yes.
All right. Well, there's an example of what's wrong, but look, at one meeting, at one meeting, a person gave a talk and used the term parasite. She was jumped on, she made the newspapers, because the word parasite was used, and a board member said, that's a derogatory term, actually calling it racist, and again, anti-Semitic. I worked in West Hartford for many years, very close to the Jewish community. I never knew parasite was a derogatory or pejorative word, so I called my people I know at the Anti-Defamation League, and they said, there is no way that the typical community would know that. That is a word that's used if, and she said, did the person work with Israel now or with the Holocaust? She said, if they did, that group knows that word is pejorative. But now, here's what happened. There is no way the person I spoke to said that the typical ordinary person could relate those two, unless you were involved. So, one, you don't take on somebody because you have a personal view. If you cannot remain unbiased, you should recuse yourself. If you disagree, you need to do it in in a way that doesn't dismantle their argument. You need to listen. The second, in that same meeting, one of the women said, why is there so much passion? Why are they getting so much passion? What's the trouble here? And she said, we need more discussion, but then said, why do we need this? Like, what's wrong here? We're the good guys. Now, the answer should have been is, why don't I talk to somebody and find out why? And you would have found out what you just heard today, and that is, your your strident levels of communication are blocking communication. You would have not met the criteria that Jeff heard the other day at the State Department.
Thank you, Mr. Barelli, I'm profusely apologetic that I have to, that I have to interject, I truly am. What I would like to say is, I do think that you have tremendous to say, maybe you should come in.
It is in writing, I.
Might be a good idea.
I, I, I.
Yeah, Matt, I know we're going to talk some more. We've scheduled some time, we're working on that. We talked quite a bit as well, so we'll keep the conversations going.
Very good. Was there another person zooming in that wanted to speak?
That's, that's all that.
Thank you, Jackie, and thank you all for everyone that spoke tonight, whether it was in person or via Zoom. We do appreciate the comments and the feedback. Thank you so much.
There we have Kate as well. Kate Steele.
Okay, great, thank you. So with that being said, I'll move on to the approval of minutes of July twenty-sixth meeting, Board of Education regular meeting. Do I have a motion?
I would like to make an approval. I need to approve the minutes, sorry.
Thank you, and do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Barry. All in favor? Anyone not in favor? Anybody with standing? No, passes. unanimously, thank you, and we have a special report tonight, I believe Mr. Daco is on Zoom tonight.
I am, thank you.
Hi, Mr. Daco, welcome.
Thank you very much. Unfortunately, I'm pressed for time tonight, so I won't be able to stay on much longer. My next Zoom meeting starts in five minutes, but just wanted to. Please bring you up to speed. The biggest thing is the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance has approved the initial action to spend some of the American Rescue Fund, and that it will be going to a town meeting that pending our vote this week will be on September first. So it's the beginning of a road we're going to have going forward to invest that that money into our community, so both the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance meeting minutes identify the first six or so activities that are going to receive some of that money to help the residents of Eastline. And that's all I had to report from the Board of Selectmen, but I want to thank you all for what you do each and every day, not just during your meeting, so. School's almost upon us, and I wish you the best of luck with getting the schools back up and running. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Daco.
Before you leave, you said the meeting is September first?
Yeah, it's, that's the proposed date. Wednesday, the first, and we're meeting this Wednesday to authorize that to get posted on the town board and the newspaper, but that's the current planned date.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Really quickly, if anybody has a question, but I don't see that anybody does, so thank you so much, Paul.
You're welcome, thank you.
All right, so we're going to move on to the consent agenda, which we have a proposed donation from Stop &amp; Shop A Plus School Reward Program valued at two thousand five hundred and ninety-one dollars and fifty-six cents.
I would like, and I saw that they're putting for discontinuing the program.
I did see, I know. I know, can I get a motion on that?
I would like to recommend the approval of the consent agenda as posted.
Great, can I get a second?
Second.
We just have a recommendation, you can wait again when you speak, because it's hard to know speaking with these masks. And someone just asked.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We know each other's voices.
No worries. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, all in favor?
All right.
Say aye. Anybody not in favor? No? Anybody with? No? All right, we're going to move on to number five, we have nothing, number six, we have nothing. Unity, and we're going to go to number seven, which is.
Six.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed it, forgive me, the high school baseball, forgive me, how did I do that? It is because it's Jim, it's a Tom, okay? We are going to have a discussion action possibly on the high school baseball field study, so if you'd like to.
Sure, let me, let me just start it, and Chris Lund is on the line, he'll, he'll talk as well, and he'll share more specifics, but we had brought this to the last meeting. I know we were pressed for time, we wanted to make sure we had ample time to discuss, so we brought it back to this meeting. Chris is going to give us a little bit more, why don't we do an overview again of the the different proposals? You've all received the study, so if you had a chance to see the two different scenarios that they had outlined in in the study, we can talk about those. And then some financing to potentially us, how we might be able to afford this. So with that, Chris, let me turn it over to you and just give a review or update, and we'll go from there.
So, good evening, everyone, and once again, we are back to the report on baseball field. Just a quick overview, as a reminder, the Tom Irwin was the consultant, they do turf and athletic fields and golf course consulting. They provided a report that had two recommended options, solutions, recommended a solution which rebuilt basically the outfield, and then there's secondary option, which was some short-term work, which would have required us to return to doing it again in another couple of years, so. I'm recommending we proceed with the their recommendation as well, which is the reconstruction baseball outfield. As we talked at the FFO, we're addressing some of the costs associated with this project, the construction, according to the Irwin Associates expected construction cost for that would probably be around one hundred and thirty K. And the design, engineering, consulting, project management, and first year worth of turf growing, which would be the Irwin, would be approximately twenty-two K. One of the undetermined or the primary undetermined costs at this point in time would be the installation of a water line from the current service line on the campus, wherever closest the baseball field would be. That would be something that we would install. I'll be meeting with the Water Department on Thursday to discuss where we could tie in or where would be the most optimum place to tie into their line to minimize the cost of laying a new water line. As I mentioned, that cost is undetermined. It'll be, of course, contingent upon whether we have to go under parking lots, where we can tie in closest, and some other factors, of course, related to what we need to do, so. We are thinking that the cost and projects probably going to run somewhere around one hundred and seventy-five K. Some of those fees that the consultant has mentioned, as well as possibly some of the costs for the water line with the town may be negotiable. So we may get that number down a little bit further. Of course, some of the concerns I have right now is just the construction part, of course, we'll go out the bid, and at any given time, you never know exactly what the prices are going to be, how many bidders you're going to get, and what else is going on. As most people have heard right now, construction costs are through the roof, because there's a lot of money to be had, so. That, of course, remains a concern. But that's where we are at the present time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Chris.
Thanks, Chris. Does anybody have any questions in regards to the options?
How are we going to pay for it?
Exactly.
So we did. So we, yeah, so we discussed this at FFO before, and we think that through a combined using ARP funds and the current budget, we can actually fund this without anything incremental to our current budget and the ARP funding, so there is a way that we can use utilize it to fund one hundred and seventy-five and make it happen.
Okay.
And, you know, the other things as we discuss this is, you know, we, the importance. you know, it is the centerpiece of our campus. As you drive on the school, it's the first thing you see. So not only, you know, the importance of a field and for our baseball team to be able to play on actually our home field, but it's also something as you drive on the campus, you know, right now. I know when I drive by it, I look and like, oh, boy. And we'd like to restore it to what it was 10 years ago, a decade ago. It was, you know, a really nice field that I think won some awards and stuff at times, and we should do that. It's also one of the only, or maybe the only lighted field in Eastline for baseball. 100% sure, but I don't think Bridebrook or.
Bridebrook's not.
And Betts is not. So that does, that is important as well. So.
Little league fields are.
Yeah, but they, yeah, we can't, but yeah. So for, hi, sorry, for high school level baseball, it is one of the fields. So, you know, as FFO, when we discussed, we thought it would be a good, we thought that because we can manage it financially through ARP and our current budget and managing those dollars, that we thought it's a good idea to move forward. And there is some benefit of if we can move, the sooner we move, the sooner, more likely that our players can actually get a few games in next year at home on our home field.
Yeah, our kids need this to happen. Our field needs to get fixed. We put almost, I think it was $50,000 roughly about five years ago, new dugouts.
Right.
So now we're sitting on a, you know, a field issue that needs to be rectified.
So I just have a question because I, to my knowledge, we've utilized that field as a source of revenue also. So I mean, it is something that other districts and programs utilize. So that would be a more attractive clearly.
Yeah.
A great to continue revenue.
Absolutely.
Bringing that in. So I think that's great. Any, Chris, anything on a refund from the people that actually, I'm just, you know, I'm stuck on it because I feel like, you know, kind of got taken there. So is there anything that we can go back on them?
I'm negotiating, trying to get some of the fees back, but using that towards other ground needs. Because the company that, they have a contract district wide. So trying to get the money back or credit for some additional work at the other places that are still operational.
That would be great. Thank you so much. And thank you for all the work you've done on this. I know that it's been, it's been very challenging. Are we ready to, Barry, I'm sorry. Barry has a question.
Questions. There is two options set here on page eight and page 13. There are slight differences in the wording of the two of them. Are we voting on page eight or page 13?
I was working off page eight, because that was the, yup, that was the person most.
The appendix looks a little bit more detailed. So. Then the second point I have is there is drainage in option two, but no drainage in option one. Is that intentional?
There is drainage, there is drainage in option one. The difference though is that in option one, they're, they're deconstructing the field entirely and then laying it in as part of the reconstruction itself. So maybe it's not spelled out specifically in there, but that is definitely going to be a well-draining field from here on out. So, but it's going to be, you know, layered drainage, you know, based on the way the sand goes in and the layers as well as, you know, typical drainage, whereas in the other option, option two, they're cutting in drainage pathways.
All right. Just one other piece to it. We want to be transparent and clear, you know, with the Board of Finance as to, you know, how we're going about this. So I would, you know, at their next meeting, I'd go down and report that out as to, you know, what our plan would be. And I think they would be supportive of, you know, how we're going about this, to be honest. So, but I just want to be clear with that, that we would be transparent with it.
The only recommendation I would make is to see if we could maybe integrate appendix one with the main body so that the language in both of those are the same. And the specificity on the surface drainage to make it a bit more specific and improve to take in some of the ideas that you just noted about layer and what's going to happen. So that it's clear that, you know, now what we're voting and what we're recommending here.
Barry, just, just to be clear, you're referencing the text on 13?
The text.
At the, right on that page, right? Okay.
I just, you know, I just.
Because it's bulleted out.
Like there is some reference to like brilliant subsolality compactor and so forth and that. And that's absent in one on page eight. So I just, you know, if you just integrate carefully, I would think that moving forward, if we could eliminate appendix one and just integrate that into option one and option two, so we wouldn't have two kind of different documents there.
It says on there that they're going to be different. It says this is a sequence of operations that are general guidance only. It is recommended that a full set of construction plans and specs will be created.
And that's what's going to happen. That's what we started about with the additional funds that are, that are needed.
It says it's basically a generalized plan.
So what we could do too is bring that full spec back if necessary, or just keep you, you know, send that to you for.
For that, it's just that you've got, you know, you have an appendix and you have a main document. I would eliminate the appendix and integrate that in the document so that you don't have two references that there. That's all.
Yeah. Yup. Thanks, Barry. Chris, we'll take a look at that and then we'll see what the board wants to do with action. And I know just Kate and Tim are out there. I don't know if they want to chime in or if they have anything they need to add. I just want to.
Okay. All right.
Yeah. Hi, hi, this is Tim. I, I would really think that we should take, make a motion to move forward with this with the restoration of the baseball field for an amount of not to exceed $175,000. I think there's time urgency on this, and I think you can also ask Chris to bring back the specific proposal that will be going out to bid prior to it actually being released. And people can review that as well and understand it. That's what I, that would, that would be my suggestion.
Tim, was that a motion I heard then?
Well, yeah, I'll, I'll make that. I would make that motion if somebody wants to, wants to second it.
I'll second. All right. All in favor?
All right.
All right.
I? Anybody not in favor? Anybody with standing? Okay. And passage unanimously. Thank you so much.
We'll bring that information back. Chris, we'll talk some more. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Right. Thank you, everybody. We're going to move on to the discussion action items for instruction. We have COVID-19 mitigation strategies for the 21, 22 school year.
So I probably inundated you with a lot of information that I've sent, that I've received. A lot of regional discussions about our mitigation strategies. You know, we're, let me start by saying we're trying to start our school year off as normal as possible. And that, that's our, that's our goal. Outside of, you know, what, you know, we are receiving from information as strong recommendations. And I use that term, strong recommendations, because that's the term that is being used, you know, by the Department of Health, CSD. And it's an important one because it kind of changes the complexion of, you know, how we respond. Let's start with masks just to get that out and open. I've corresponded, you know, with many parents and I appreciate, you know, Mr. Bell's information that he shared and others. And I've heard both sides clearly, but the most recent document that I just sent you from our attorney-in-law firm that went to, she had any good covers most every school district, you know, in the state, just about. And, you know, to read this, that, and really the last sentence, you know, in this, it just solidifies that, you know, wearing a mask at school, it's legally required right now. Because it is their interpretation until September 30th, that date with the executive order that's in place. So if we were to try and circumvent this, you know, and I'll let you, you can read through this and I've already stated quite a bit. You know, we're putting ourselves in a very liable, criminally liable position. And that's something that I could ever recommend to the Board of Education, for sure. I don't know if the governor will come out and change that prior to 9:30 or if something different, you know, will come forward or a new recommendation. But as, and I don't anticipate that's going to happen. I think he's probably going to let this, let the school year start, but I don't know for sure. We were supposed to receive additional guidance from the Department of Health. It has not come forward yet. Addendum five and nine are supposed to be updated. And in those, it talks about, it's these mitigation strategies, hasn't come forward yet. But we need to communicate out with our parents. I had sent one letter out the Friday before last, and I told our parent community they would hear from me prior to the 23rd. So this Friday, I'm going to send a final letter out and it will have, you know, the mitigation strategies in there. And we will be starting, you know, with masks. And I, I think that is an important piece that, you know, we don't want to put ourselves in any criminally liable situation. Any questions on masks or who's going to talk about that at all, or Eric?
Masks indoor, but outdoor.
Outdoor, no masks. No, no, for those slides and what we've heard from the Department of Health, student children do not need to wear masks. Adults do not need to wear masks outside.
So sporting events.
Yeah, we have to go, we revert to the CIC guides. However, CIC does refer back to us as it pertains to sporting events. So most of them, you know, they're outdoors. So we haven't gotten that far with, with like a football defense. Are we going to mandate, you know, mask wearing in the stands?
Right.
We'll turn to DPH. Probably at this point, I can't answer that yet. I think we're going to see what they say and there's.
CIC hasn't said anything about masks and stands.
No, they reverted back to the locals.
And then we have volleyball in the fall indoors.
Indoors. All masks will be, need to be worn by fans because it's indoors.
Players.
Players too.
Fans.
Yeah, players and fans, yeah.
Okay. So through September 30th, kind of that, that's the kind of law.
That's the law.
And, and so then at some point, we'll get more information and we'll discuss it. Post, what happens post September.
It's post September 30th. We're going to need something, or is it just going to be left up in the districts to decide if they want to continue, you know, with that? I would say the Delta variant and other areas, you know, will dictate some of that. But we just don't know the answer to that yet, but at least we can say, you know, we need to start the year off in this capacity. And then I'm concerned because September 30th is going to come real quick.
Yes.
September's going to fly. So we want to be clear with, you know, our stakeholders, our community as to what's happening with this. So hopefully we'll get some further guidance and I'll get it out to all of you as soon as I have it, as well as our staff and our parent community as well.
Thanks, Jeff.
So that's the mask piece. You've seen the slides and, you know, the cohorting is not necessary anymore. If we're outside, the masks don't need to be worn. We're going to try and do mask breaks. We're going to be out as much as possible. Snow days. There is no option.
That was my question.
Yeah, there is no, there is zero option for snow days that should be remote learning days, which is really strange.
I saw that at the leadership conference.
Yeah, it's, it, it doesn't make a lot of sense. I'll say that publicly. But they're studying it, the state is so, and they're planning on the idea of a remote option beyond snow days for high school only for 22, 23. So by January 1st, the commissioner, the acting commissioner of education has to have a report done. So it just, it's a little frustrating because, you know, we, I thought we did a great job last year with having three snow days and then we had three remote days because of additional weather. We can't do that now. So we can't, our graduation date is, would be the 15th, but we don't know. It's going to probably move now, which it just, it was nice having that locked in and we had that option, but not knowing what the winter.
You can't have any remote learning dates.
No.
They're just everyone's home.
Exactly. It's a snow day. There is really, there is no more remote option other than for quarantine purposes. Which brings me to, you know, what our plan would be for the middle school and the high school. We would still, and this would be for quarantining only, where students could, if we have to send them out for the 10 days, we'd still use the 10 days. They can zoom in. Now, we're going to have a much lower number of students that need to quarantine because they've changed the, you know, now it's three feet apart, you know, with, with masks on. So a lot less worry about with having to quarantine kids, which is good. And a lot of high school those kids are already vaccinated, which helps.
And you don't need to. What's the rule if they're vaccinated?
If you're vaccinated, you don't need to quarantine as long as you're not showing any symptoms. So, but if you show symptoms, then that's a different, different story.
And we're going to have all this information on our website that's accessible.
Exactly. Yes. Yup. We'll be posting the slides. The slides are already out there. We'll post everything else. Like I just got this this afternoon at like 3 o'clock.
Well, I will say, and I want to know, I mean, I found that to be very, very useful to help because I think that there's a tremendous amount of anxiety with, that's going along with the masks for, you know, community members and their children and kind of what can we do? What can't we do? Who has, is it negotiable? Who has really the final say on that? And I think that that makes it very clear, at least until the 30th. I think that it is going to be up and down, just like it was last year, to be honest with you.
I think it could be. Yup.
We'll have to just wait and see where it goes.
Yeah, exactly. So it's kind of a wait and see with, you know, that mask piece. But are there, you know, mitigation strategies in the cafeterias? You know, we still will have plexiglass because kids still are crossing each other and their masks are down, they're reading. We are not planning to use plexiglass in the classrooms. DPH has said they really have not found it. You know, and an item that is a good mitigating strategy or, you know, a mandate per se or recommending it only in the cafeteria. They, they still recommend it. So.
And what about the wave situation at the high school for lunches?
We're going to have three lunch waves.
Okay.
Yeah, every day. Yeah, I know. It used to be one. We are doing three. We are going to work really hard to avoid the south gym like we did. We use the south gym last year. We're going to change the table and all those, we bought about 80 of those long tables. We're going to put in the mini here because they give us more space.
Okay.
So with three lunch waves, we can fit students and we can space them out if specifications needed.
I imagine. I know the kids were complaining last year because they lost clubs. Are we going to find a way to get them their clubs back? Because if they're all doing lunch waves, that's when they did clubs.
That's when they did clubs. Yeah. We're working through the advisory piece on Wednesday. So Deb Kelly is, and I don't think that is, she shouldn't be on the line. She was here earlier, but, and, you know, at the next meeting, we can have her, you know, come and share more.
And we are going back to the 121212. We're not giving them that full month. They have all eight classes.
No, it's back to the normal, yup, normal school schedule. It's just that. It was tough. Yeah, we, we tried something a little different and, you know, it had its likes and dislikes. That's for sure.
Wednesdays and the clubs were tough for the kids.
Absolutely. And we don't want to lose the, you know, the clubs because we've had a lot of them. And again, we want to get back to as normal as, as possible, right down to, you know, not cohorting, letting kids, you know, play together, not at recess, elementary and fifth grade as well. So.
Go ahead, Eric.
Couple of questions. For the grouping of lunch waves, is it by year, like seniors of a certain? Or is it just completely scheduled based?
I believe it's scheduled based. Yes. Yeah. I'm about 99% sure of that, but I haven't circled back with Deb. You know, at least you don't remember hearing anything from Deb. I don't know if it's come up in any of your conversations, but okay.
I know last year it was mixed.
I believe it's scheduled.
It was, it was.
Yeah. So I think it's, at least that's what it was.
Yup.
And then the middle school students who take math at the high school for last year. They were zooming in rather than, or is that now they can come and attend school in person at the high school?
Yeah, I'm, we're back to again, as normal as possible. So I'm glad you brought that up. I'll talk to Jason and make sure, you know, we return to resuming that. So thank you for mentioning that.
Okay.
Okay. Does anybody else have any other questions? I don't see any cans. All right.
Well, just one, with the busing though, just sort of, is where, nothing has changed with what has happened with the busing and the spacing and mask wearing and the buses too.
And are we going to go back to the late buses, the way that it was prior to the changes that we had to make with COVID?
Um, we should. Yeah. Unless there's something that, not thinking of that would impede us from doing that, but we should be back to, uh, late buses. Sports teams will be, you know, running. Chris Urban is planning on packing, you know, the food items for sports teams and travel.
What about before and after care at the elementary store?
It's all up and.
So it's up and running and we're ready to roll.
Ready to roll.
So school will be back to kind of pre-COVID.
Pre-COVID.
Except masks.
Oh, gosh.
Lunch waves at the high school.
Okay.
And still a little bit with the, you know, with the spacing and spacing of the.
In the bus, some of the bus and some of the.
Yup.
Okay.
That's pretty much.
Step in the right direction.
It is. It's getting us in the right direction. Again, and I know that folks have been frustrated with the masks. I feel like we reverted and gone backwards and we all just want to move forwards.
Oh, I don't think that's funny.
We were looking into, to just one last piece, again, to try and get kids outside as much as possible so that they don't have to wear the mask.
Right.
And staff tents. And the idea of maybe purchasing or renting, you know, tents to put out at at least maybe the high school and middle school. So.
So they can just have class outside.
Yeah, exactly. You, you can do class. Yeah, exactly. You you can do class outside. It could utilize some of the lunch components to be outside, other events or activities to be outside, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
We still have all those picnic tables out here.
Yeah, absolutely. We're still going to use all those. Yep. One thing, we're still looking for more guidance on those, like large concerts, like convocation. I'm planning on bringing staff. Back together. We're all going to be onsite here at the high school. We're going to be outside for our meet and greet and coffee and so forth. But then we're going to come into the auditorium and keep it brief, or we're going to come in the auditorium and everybody will be wearing masks.
Okay.
So.
All right. Now, does anybody know about the park and rec before program that they usually run? Does anybody know if that's going to run or should I just reach out to? Dave and say that he usually runs a program before and after for the middle schoolers so they can come. So that I know that that was tougher among people, but I'm I'm just assuming that it's going.
Yeah, I bet you he's going to, he's tried to align.
He has.
We're running, he says, I'm going to run it. So.
All right.
Yeah.
Well, that sounds good.
So that's where I'll keep you posted on, you know, anything else that comes forward again, I'll communicate out to, to parents on that piece. I'll also add a piece in about, you know, D E I. You know, in fact, you know, we are not doing any CRT that's not in our curriculum. It's not the state social studies curriculum. So I just, I want to be clear with that with folks that it's not what we're doing. So.
Sounds good. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
All right, we're going to move on to administration reports and I'm coming right back to you, Jeff.
All right. Um, I I put on here just to, Tim and I talked about it a little bit with our meetings here, you know, whether we still, I just want to make sure everybody's comfortable with meeting, you know, onsite. Some districts have gone back to remote. Board of Ed meetings, I I'm good. I just want to make sure with masks on, if everybody's comfortable. I want to put that out there. You know, if you can email me too and let me know and we can pull, but I I feel like everybody's okay with, you know, hopefully for the most part, so. We'll keep going with that. Equity audit update, so it's still in the hands of our attorney who's reviewing it and vetting it. So we will plan on sharing that information out to the full board either at a special meeting or a meeting in early September. So it needs to be clear so our public can hear that as well. And we'll make sure that that's clear and on on the agenda. The pool roof was a go today. Actually, yesterday, I think it was, they started doing the sampling of the rusted. The name of what you call pile, pile lot, not pile lots.
Of beans.
Yeah, they're beans. Yeah, there's another name. I'm trying to think of the technical name of the bean. We'll call them beans. So they're, they're assessing those and the rust and the underlayment of that roof. So that's going on. The pool is is been drained and now it's being filled back up as well, Rob's, you know, usual annual maintenance. So it has been closed and I'll fill the opening back up later this week.
Can I just a quick question on that?
Yeah.
Is it, is, is membership, do we, do we have the memberships back to normal or?
I'll check and see where he stands with where it, I don't know, Eric, if he's gained them all, all back. So you could have, it'd be whatever you either have to over and give an update of my weekly update. We'll start the weekly update again to coming up.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll check on, on that with the pool.
I'm curious on the memberships also, just because the last time he was here, one of the concerns that I had raised was the increase in. The price and I did hear a lot of feedback, believe it or not, on that, which is really interesting.
Yeah.
And just to kind of see what his thoughts are on that.
Yeah, I got a little feedback too from the community. I think that people understood and it kind of changed a little bit, but. Tomorrow, we have our, our retreat with our admin will be working intensely on our improvement plans. So we're going to bring those forward to everybody as well and sharing that information out. As it ties in within the development of the board of goals and obviously Michael's too. So you'll be seeing that information soon. Not tomorrow, no.
No, man, is that on campus or are you guys going somewhere?
Yeah, we're going off campus tomorrow. Yes, yeah. The A R P grant is fully submitted. We signed off on that. Friday, so that's, that's in. I think we behoove us to bring back, again, we we talked about it a couple of times over the last couple of months. You know, what we're looking to fund, but it might be good idea to just circle back on that to where everybody sees that again. As to what our plans were, some of the funding, especially in light of the baseball field, you know, as well. So we'll plan on bringing that, that back. And actually, we've got a great high level of new staff that we fired. So we have new staff orientation. Annalise is getting ready for that next week, the twenty fourth. So we're excited for a lot of new folks that are joining us.
Very exciting.
Yeah, I'm, yep.
All right, well, then we'll just move right on into Annalise.
Okay, so I can start with the new staff orientation. So. You know, between the staff members who were hired after the first of the, who had might would have missed the staff orientation from last year and any new hires for this upcoming year, we're at. About fifty new staff members that we're going to be officially onboarding to East Line Public School System, which is really exciting.
Yeah.
So I'm working on the agenda for that. That will be a blend of sort of the technical things about boarding our staff with regards to their devices and how to check email and. But also the adaptive components about, you know, who am I as a member of the East Line Public School System? Talking about educators ourselves and just supporting them in their transition. I think it's also important to provide them with the opportunity to develop a network, network amongst each other. Because they do share one thing in common and that's they're all new to East Line. And I'm a part of that too.
Sure.
So I'm really excited and Kim Daly, who has officially started, my new executive secretary. So she is officially on board and she will be there as an active participant throughout the day. So we're excited for that. So been been working to plan that, some other upcoming events that we have. So we're kind of in this transition, like we're wrapping up some of the summer work and then. Also ramping up for the start of the school year. So we have some professional learning opportunities. On the horizon, meaning next week for some additional staffs. And we have our student-centered coaching, professional learning. That will continue. Today's next week, we also have a professional development on our new English language arts curriculum resource amplified. They'll be coming in and training all of our middle school, D L A teachers and special education teachers. We provided some training on the foundations program, level three training for all of our elementary school teachers. So we've got, we've been pretty busy this summer. And then today I just hosted about forty teachers. Kind of a wrap up meeting and a sort of thinking forward meeting. After they had attended two professional development opportunities. One was on the curriculum camp. Was. I'm sort of thinking about best practice and curriculum development and also considering post, having those post-COVID implications. And then most recently, they've engaged in a professional development with the ISKE conference. Which is the International Standards for Technology Education. And really started to frame our thinking with regards to our blended learning environment and how our learning would impact. You know, how we approach curriculum, but also how we're going to also approach supporting teachers through professional learning in the upcoming school year.
You've been so busy.
It's been busy but exciting. You know, like I said, you can hear my voices. I'm, I'm so, so excited. I, I'm really, really looking forward to. You know, really rolling up my sleeves and getting to work and getting people officially back on board in just a couple of weeks. I feel just sometimes we're so much closer to that. Yeah.
Very good.
Yeah.
Thank you so much, Annalise. Do you have any questions?
Just curious, of the, of the fifty, how many are brand new teachers?
That's a good question. Brand new to the, like, to the profession.
This is new to the, yeah.
I don't have that off the top of my head, but I would say, you know.
Fifteen?
Maybe.
Called the fifteen somewhere.
Yeah, I don't know. I, I can find that information out for you.
Oh, you've got.
I'm just curious. I just, what I, I'm just thinking fifty is a big number and if we're taking on a large number of. Green folks, what are we doing to make sure, you know, is there any? COVID monies or whatever, is there anything we can do with our veteran staff to kind of? Mentor these folks up to, to make sure that, you know, we.
So I can.
Deliver what we want.
As part of the, even the state's onboarding process to new teachers, they go through what's called a teen module. It's a two-year.
Right, right.
Mentoring module. So there's that, that they will be engaged in. We have some folks who obviously were going into year one and finishing up year two. But Jeff and I have talked about continuing on additional sessions throughout the course of the year for. New teachers, not only just new teachers, but new to East Line teachers as well. Um, because the one staff, one day staff orientation is great in onboarding them, but how do we continue to support them? As they, you know, encounter challenges and successes throughout here. They also have three level partners that they'll be working with as well, so.
It's definitely a support network there, I think, the way that they've been kind of. Intermittently placed into the different positions, varying positions.
That's good.
Yeah, and there were a couple of people out of that fifty-two that were hired, you know, mid-year last year that, you know, are coming to our new student, new staff orientation as well, so. This is making their long term, so maybe for a short period of time, but we now we've hired them on for an official position and a lot of pairs too in that way.
Right, that certified and non-certified staff. So that's, that also includes our all-day professional staff as well. Yeah, yeah.
I, I know that kind of our culture and climate was part of what we talked about for goals and stuff. It'd be really nice to. Try to work something in and make sure that new folks feel this really welcome and I don't know what we got into work, but.
Yeah, well, we, one thing we did.
Everybody excited to be part of our teams.
Absolutely.
I'm, I'm very a huge proponent of that. I think that is such an important component in building and, you know, staff development.
We want to make sure we're giving them the support they need to be successful.
And doing a mid-year check too, you know, we want to bring them all together, certified and non-certified and just say, okay, it's been half a year. It's gone by fast. What do we do well? What did we not do well? What could you use more of?
Right.
And talk through it with them with this larger group that has some beneficial done in the past. That's awesome.
Very good. Thank you so much, Annalise. Mariana?
Budget for twenty one, twenty two. We'll have staff, so we'll likely have some budget transfers. To take care of next board meeting. Munis that I keep talking about, so we are the final component since I got by the town. So we have started some. High-level training and then I'll eventually be bringing staff. Probably sometime mentally fall, early winter, starting with our general ledger system and then. We had hoped April first, we would be live, but that probably isn't likely. Anna and I are talking tomorrow, so we'll be a little bit. Delayed because of the delay in this final piece that has to be signed on. So, but if there's a light at the end of the tunnel, I'm very, very excited about that.
You've worked.
And the. Other component is time and attendance, hopefully, assuming everything is working properly. We are hoping to get. Fall, I'm hoping to get all the hourly people started on September twelfth with using time and attendance. So I think that'll be. Certainly be a huge time saver for not only staff, but I think it's so much easier for employees as well. That's about it.
Very good. Thank you so much. Does anybody have any questions for Mariana?
Oh, actually, one more thing. Okay. So the final deficit, so for twenty twenty one, the final deficit is three hundred and seventy-three thousand and change, so three hundred and seventy-five thousand. So what will happen with that is we are retroactively going to go back and we revise our SO two application. To on basically encompasses our virtual liking salaries. That's pretty much what that three seventy-three ends up being. So we revised our SO two application to take care of that piece of it and then we reallocated what some of the SO two funds. We're going to use, we moved that to A R. Initially, we thought we were going to have the A R P funding available, but that application was just due today. So the state's recommendation was to revise your SO two application. Change and move that to A R. So that'll, hopefully that'll get approved, but we should have. No questions to that. So that's where we ended up with.
Sounds good.
So we'll bring that up.
Hold on, I think Eric, Eric's got a question.
Just a question comment. So if I recall, our original estimate, we were well in over five hundred thousand. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So it's going the right direction.
Yeah, one, yes.
Yeah.
And um. eventual, so next year I'm changing the year and procedures a little bit. So we are. Well, I'll be closing the year earlier than typically we have in the past, just because. Things aren't coming through in time and we don't have all the information and there's open purchase orders that again. You know, the department is open, but then, yeah, we end up closing them. So, which is good. So it's better than going in the other direction, but it would be nice to have a clear number earlier. In the year, so that that process will change for next year.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Go ahead, Jerry.
Quick summary, Marion. So if I put this all together, if everything happens as you think it's going to happen, we will not envy or the deficit.
I'm talking about last year's deficit, varying the three seventy.
The three seventy-five.
The three seventy-five is the deficit. We had initially been anticipating a five hundred thousand dollars.
Is that the current?
That's the previous year, not the current year. I mean, the current year, we hope we don't have a deficit anymore.
So the previous year ended on what day?
June thirtieth.
June thirtieth, okay. So on the June thirtieth year, then if I rephrase my question, we, if everything goes as you planned. We will not have a deficit for that June thirtieth year.
Of this year, of June thirty, twenty twenty-two. So our fiscal year runs July first of twenty twenty to June thirty of twenty twenty-one. So that's the one that ended with a deficit of three seventy-three. But yes, oh, I see what you're saying. Yes, I'm sorry. So assuming the revisions are accepted by the state for the S R two funds, then yes, correct. We will, I've shipped, I've spoken with Anna at the town and we will take care of shifting those sal, those salaries to the grant fund. And I really don't foresee any issues with the state approving it as well within the bylaws.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mariana. All right, and we're going to move on to committee reports. We've got the triple A committee coming up in September. We just had finance and facilities and operations.
We did. We had a packed agenda, five items. So we had Dave Putnam came in for ten minutes or so just to talk about. There's a bunch of different summer programs that involve. Either our coaches are doing youth clinics or our preseason clinics and all that stuff. And he, a lot of it runs through him. So he gave us an understanding of what are all these different things that we have and our coaches kind of interacting with their players and how it all works, which was. Just good to understand that there's a lot going on and it's nice that our coaches are spending time with the youth as well as. All within C I C guidelines and managing the player, their upcoming players and getting them ready for the season. So that was interesting. And beneficial. I appreciate Dave coming in and talking to us. We talked about the high school baseball field, so we already did that. Then we went through. Everybody recalls or I don't know if you recall. A year plus ago, we, we had a lot of discussions about our controls over cash that comes into the facilities or all. Cash or other inflows into the district as well as expenditures. I want to make sure our policies and controls are, are in place. COVID, so we, we had a whole plan. COVID hit and we had no cash coming in the door and we had very little expenditure. So we just went through again, just reviewed what we had, were implementing and we're going to implement into this year. So. Mariana's done a lot of great work to, to pull that together, working, it's mainly the high school, so working with Deb and, and her team. So. That was a good update. The next item, Chris had come forward that he'd like, within his budget, he has room to purchase a. Because it's a Polaris ATV between the middle school and Lily B. They have to move a lot of stuff between the schools, the loading dock. There's a small loading dock at the Lily B, but there's a large one at the middle schools. Things come in the middle school and they have to get them over to the. To Lily B and they'd like to purchase this. The other thing it will help is they're going to get the snow plows. They can plow. If you think about it, it took me, it took me a second to picture it. The number of sidewalks that we have between Lily B and the middle school is, it's, it's unreal. So that will help there. And we're also going to check with the town if they may be able to help with the senior center and the library and plowing the sidewalks there. So we agreed as the F F O, it's within the budget to go forward. It was nineteen thousand and change. To purchase and we think that that was a good idea. And then the last item we had was the policy committee. Sent, reviewed the purchasing procedures and policy and updated it and sent it to F F O. And updated it and sent it to FFO to review. We had one minor change for the emergency situations. And just making sure, the biggest thing is just that it says that the board would get notified if there's a purchase above a certain amount that we get notified. That was the one minor change. Otherwise, I think it looks great.
Thank you. That sounds great. Thank you, Eric. Oh, that's. All right. Well, when Jamie's ready, we'll move right into policy because I believe the thing out of policy.
Policy. We had a policy meeting on last Thursday night. Um, we discussed the purchasing policy and that we would like it to go to the FFO. To review it for practice and then to come back. And I'm glad you guys got to look at it. Um, we also talked about. Um, reviewing the board's ethics policy and maybe switching it to be more in line with the town's ethics policy. And, and maybe adopting some of their agenda so that we could flow. So if you go to a town meeting, you go to a board meeting, they have the same rules. So there's no cross ruling. Um, and we also talked about doing a board of ed retreat soon. Um, to discuss ethics, freedom of speech and those kind of things. Um, because we kind of had a whole bunch of new people join and then we had COVID, so we never really had this cohesive. Learning like we normally do. So we did, we did talk about that and it would also be a refresher for the board members who have been here for a while. Um, but that was that.
That sounds cool. Well, I like the whole continuity of keeping it very similar to the town. Yes. So I'm, I like that. All right. Thank you so much. Does anybody have any questions for Jamie at all? Or no? Nope. I think we're good. All right. So I think we'll move down to board comments and future agenda items. So if anybody would like to speak to board comments, please do.
I have a quick one.
Go ahead, Jamie.
Um, Miracle League, the last day to perk, the drawing is the twentieth. So if you need a ticket, I still have some, or if you want to go to the Miracle League site to get a ticket. Um, it helps out the Children's Museum, Bryantic Main Street, and the Miracle League, all the money, and you can win a nice card.
Indeed.
And all the Miracle League camps have been really great this summer.
They really have. All right. Does anybody else? Go ahead, Eric.
Um, one thing I'd like to maybe talk more about is can we at the high school have a invite speakers? And maybe I'm thinking of this three lunch thing where we talk about, people talk about what they, what it means to work in whatever field they work in. And, and to give the students a chance. You know, I've, I've done a few with, at the business students. And I think it went, you know, it's my opinion. I thought it went well. They were engaged. They asked a lot of questions. So it, it seemed to work. And I, I could see where, you know, you get a scientist and you get business person and you get a. And electrician in, a plumber in, you know, just like a broad, like what does it mean? And, and, you know, to be an electrician who runs a business, not only is an electrician, but runs a business and like, what is that all? And, you know, what are some things they wish they knew? In high school that they had to learn and stuff. So, you know, if we could almost have a speaker series or something like that to come in and talk. I'm sure between, I mean, I can find, I'm sure between all of us, we know people who would, you know, be happy to come in and talk.
That's a great idea. I agree.
We could talk forward, Deb, definitely.
Very good. Thank you, Eric.
Think it could tie in with some existing program already there.
Yeah.
Sure. Anybody else on board comments at all? Is Kate still on?
She is. Yeah.
Do you have any?
She's there.
Yeah, okay. I guess not. All right.
Talk, do you know anybody else that's come in to just send, you know, do the names? I don't know anybody like the advisor or.
I, I do know years, it's been a long time.
Okay.
But I do know some science.
I know Jake, Tom have volunteered this on the coming.
Oh, didn't, yeah.
Great, you know.
He's a captain. A gold captain.
Yeah.
Trying to, you know, nurses, doctors. There's just so many different options of kids or students are trying to figure out what they want to do, but.
Yeah.
From our local firemen and our local police.
And, yeah.
I think it's a great idea. Yeah, I think it's good. I love it.
No, I hundred percent agree. It seems like recently I've heard more stories, maybe because of the COVID thing. Kids going off and not making it the first year.
Yeah.
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 Um, and spending a lot of money not making it.
Yeah, I agree.
And just a quick aside, I know we got to go, but you know, one of the things that when I, I spoke to the business students that was kind of a throwaway for me. But they all, like in the feedback, they, it stuck was when I graduated college, all I wanted to do was go into banking. Like, that's all I interviewed for. That's all I want to do. Hundred percent. I go into banking and like three months in, I'm like, this is terrible. I do not want to do this. This is the worst thing in the world. I had to get out of it and right away. And, you know, they, you know, I said it. That was just what I realized, but for them it was like, wow, you didn't know. Like, I thought everybody knows, like, and they learn, you know, so it's. Cause you're not, I didn't, I didn't speak to a bunch of people who were in banking. It just seemed like that was the thing I wanted to do. And so, you know, if you can learn a little bit, maybe that would, so.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. We're on future agenda items. Does anybody want to put down anything for consideration for future agenda items? No? All right. Well, within that, I'll move to adjournments. I get a motion to make a motion to adjourn. Jamie, thank you. Second, no, Bill got it. Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Thanks.
Anybody? Nice job.